I hereby call the board of directors and meetings. I hereby call the board of the regular meetings and board of the county and the central community district meeting, held on August 3rd, 2025, in the meeting at 6:30 PM. The board of the secretary, the local board.
Yes ma'am. Sugar Frisetham? David Santos?
Yes ma'am, Frisetham.
Brandon Gobey here, ma'am.
Here.
James Mokke?
Present.
Deputy Director Maria Carassa?
I'm here.
And Lady Carassa here.
Here.
Of course.
Thank you, ma'am, for your time. Thanks on the agenda, this is prayer and pledge.
Good evening, everyone. President Perezza, standing board president, our board members, sorry. We are honored to be here representing Sinclair the Mary. This evening, we have some of our Sinclair choir members who will be saying a prayer, playing a few songs from history of Sinclair and performing a song dedicated to Sinclair and a family member that we love, Ms. Williams. So, say this, ready? Alright.
Please stand.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas pride, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Um, dear God, thank you for meeting. Please, um, for your... Dear God, thank you for meeting us together this evening. I am grateful for our school, our principal, Mr. Robbie, our teachers, staff, and all the students who work hard every day. Please bless our school, our members with long and compassion as they make important decisions for the future. Tonight will be a special day with my homies, the ladies, our retired principal, we fast played last week. She knew me as Baby Ash, her sister, and they were, and it is well known how much she loves her mother and her children, students. Please bless her family, we would be peace and comfort and your presence honorable by showing all the love and dedication she gave to this community. Yes, this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
As a former Mustang student myself, I am really proud to be able to share some of the heritage and the, um, just the history of Sinclair. So, our root Sinclair is actually named from John Sinclair, John of Sinclair. He wrote the Eyes of Texas why it's named at University of Texas. And our students are going to share instrumental version of that song. Sinclair was established in 1981. I can't find that here. It quickly became the center of this English like five subdivision. In its early years, it was guided by exceptional leaders such as the superintendent and Mrs. Williams from Long Island. Here's a, one of the early class of visionary. Upon his work's retirement, our highly revered former superintendent Dr. Cassanza placed his faith in a leader from Pecos, Texas, Miss Janice Williams. Dr. Cassanza was known for his visionary leadership and unwavering commitment to shaping the future of ECIS. Shaping generations. For 23 years, this Williams started this school, Sinclair Elementary, cultivating a example of an imposterly and happy campus members of the ECIS community. Here are some photos, memories of her interacting with students and... And then... Um, and then her, her service to the community extended beyond the school walls. She supported people at other events, graduations came. And this was the last faculty photo before she was hired. She had hired her senior flag and her retirement. Always at the top. Early in her tenure, Mrs. Williams led Sinclair's first ever DEA recognized destination. Just two years later, Sinclair remained exemplary. While the staff was really excited and celebrated with pride, Mrs. Williams reminded them to pray that all the schools in the district might one day share in that success. Here are some of the banners they used to hang in the cafeteria. So the accolades continued over a decade. But Mrs. Williams' influence extended far beyond the world of wars. She was a trendsetter. Before daily operations or training on social media, Mrs. Williams would start the day of a must-own with passion. Can you remember it? You may say it with us.
Good morning. Today's special is I am here, I do my best in all that I do, and I'm on the road to let my success, because I can do it, so can you.
They're also united and come each day.
The pride of Sinclair is the Mustang, pride and joy we share. The pride of Sinclair is the Mustang, we always show we care. Pride, respect, responsibility, traits we always use. The pride of Sinclair is will never stop, we're always at the top, at the top!
There are some of our Mustangs at the top. While we're waiting, is there anyone here that was, that would like to share something that you had a chance to send me a video?
I will. I was once a Mustang and now I am literacy coach at Sinclair.
Um, I'm Christina Gonzalez. I also was a Mustang and now I'm an honor elementary bobcat and a TIA, um, exemplary teacher.
I'm Edward Edith III. I'd love to thank Ms. Williams and my former principal for pushing me forward into college to be promised of becoming a teacher.
Hi, my name is Ashley Harris. I started as a Mustang and now I'm a TIA, designated teacher.
Thank you for starting something interesting.
Hi, my name's Patrice Addy. I started as a Mustang and now I'm a fine arts teacher at Sinclair Elementary, teaching current Mustangs and leaders.
My name is Calvin Miles. I started as a Mustang. I am now a United States Marine, serving overseas. Always at the top.
Hello, my name is Giselle Phil and I used to be a Mustang, but now I'm a hornet. I am in the 11th grade and I attend various groups at East Central. I am in BSA, Black Student Association, as the secretary. I am in student council as well, as the P-Tech liaison. I am a P-Tech as well, as a P-Tech ambassador. And I also am in Hosa and I also am a part of our city choir at East Central as well. And I just want to thank Ms. Williams for all that she's done and her memory will forever go on in my heart. We love you, Ms. Williams.
We're always a Saint Clair Mustang, a Mustang, a Mustang, a Mustang.
I'm Melissa Eddie. I used to be a Mustang, but now I am a collecting student at East Central and I now play tennis.
I used to be a Mustang and now I'm a construction officer.
My name's Catherine Potola. I started off as a Mustang, now I'm studying for my CNA as a hornet, always at the top.
I started out at Sinclair, in kindergarten, and I got a senior high school. I'm in the National Women's Society and my studies are in the... Which is what I went to major in at college. And I am, Ms. Williams, thankful for my success of being such a caring, loving, great person.
My name is Sloan Rodriguez. I started off as a Mustang and now I'm a Mustang teacher.
Today, Sinclair continues under the leadership of the district attorney Harvey. With his steady belief, effort, and hard work and dedication, no matter the circumstances, we can rise above. Sinclair has grown into an A6 D-grade school with T-A distinction. And as a Mustang, I was there when the banners were hanging in the cafeteria and it was such an honor to see those banners of her. As we reflect in our history, we honor Ms. Williams' legacy and compensate she shaped Sinclair with excellence, care, and affection. And so in her honor, may these words echo for generations of Mustangs to come.
Sinclair is where?
Always at the top!
I can't hear you!
Always at the top!
So, Sinclair have a very long history of always showing up, nobody we at the top. So, Sinclair family, stand up, may be recognized, please.
Okay, thank you so much for the amazing performance from all of you guys down there. Y'all were incredible. And, um, my next item have rewards and recognitions, so don't sit with us, we just want to get that happen.
Yes, sir. So, tonight is, uh, is a distinction and an honor that we are just so happy to come and to be able to get out. So, uh, we gather in spirit gratitude and celebration to honor a remarkable group of individuals who have truly made a difference, not just for today's students, but for generations of learners to come in ECIC. These community leaders played a pivotal role in the success of our historic May 2025 bond, the largest bond we've made in the history of our district. Through their vision, energy, and unwavering commitment, they mobilized our community about a mission of lasting significance. Because of their tireless efforts, students now will have the privilege of learning in two brand-new elementary schools and a second high school. In the years ahead, nearly 3,500 more students will have the opportunity to experience the joy of learning in modernized, state-of-the-art facilities on both the north and south ends of our district for the very first time. At this time, it is our great honor to recognize these extraordinary community members, a true force multiplier who embody what it means to make a difference. First, we'd like to call Lily Aguilar. Miss Aguilar, if you might, I'm going to stand up there once we're done, copy the episode. Next up will be Amanda Knutson, the president of the... Then we have Shinoah Magid. Come on up, Miss Magid. Then we have Claire Zamora. So, as Sam's taking pictures, I'm going to say a few more words. So throughout the 2025 bond campaign, this incredible team met faithfully and worked relentlessly. They planned and strategized, they canvassed neighborhoods, they created materials, monitored social media to ensure truth prevailed over misinformation, made phone calls, placed signs, shared shirts, and spoke passionately in the city councils, HOAs, and community gatherings. Their determination, courage, and devotion to ECIC have left a legacy that will, that will endure for generations. Because of them, students will step into classrooms that inspire learning and into facilities that reflect the very best of our community has to offer. Their work ensures that high-quality teaching and learning will take place in spaces worthy of our children's potential. So on behalf of ECIC, we extend our grit, our deepest gratitude for your hard work, your leadership, and your love for this community. Tonight, we proudly present each of you with the Staying the Difference Award. Can we give them one more round of applause? We know that, we know that it took a lot of time out of your, your own personal lives to do this. So if there's any of their family that were, that are in the audience, could you also please stand? We just would like to recognize you too, that means the kiddos, if you're there, y'all stay up.
Alright. Thank you all so much for coming out and having such a beautiful tribute to Ms. Williams. We really are very impressed by all this. Thank you for presenting your shows and your amazing, other amazing jobs. So we appreciate that, entertainment. And so we're going to take a short break for about, uh, minutes and, uh, let you guys get out of here and go home and do homework, whatever it is that you need to do. Hopefully you'll have any of that, but in case you do, and, uh, tell the fourth and fifth students to use this time. We're going to take a short break for about six minutes. Thank you. This is going to resume the meeting at 6:00 PM. Thank you for everybody who's here.
Hey, I'm with you, that's house.
Yes, I, uh, had a couple things going on there on the farm right. I went to welcome back with the coaches and that young lady there, Emily Williams, Williams is a neighbor of mine, she's on the softball team. And, uh, they had girls there, so I had to make a picture sent to her mom, rest of the girls on stage, they're down on the bottom. In the middle there, that is a coffee, just started pretty good. Uh, Bethany Cindora's team over there and that gentleman, Brian Dukie, I believe that was, uh, had a nice long conversation with him. He's also a board member of Hermine ECIC, so we're going to be connecting on various things, just to make sense of some of those. And over on the, uh, the part on the left there, uh, pictures, I went to go visit Ballard, did a, we gave him a grand tour, it was very nice. Uh, cannot wait to see the finished product on that, it looks like it's coming along extremely well, kind of great tour there. Stevie allowed me to do the top, we didn't see some, some stuff yet done, so that's me on the left up there, telling some people what to do for these acting like. So anyways, uh, just out there visiting and, uh, it was, it was pretty hot. It was pretty hot, weather that fast and everything, so, uh, thirty minutes was plenty, so, that was me.
I'll be, I'll be, oh, wow, is that? I didn't see it. We're having to be prepared. Why was she a few rounds on the first day of school? And I just wanted to go by and wish, uh, uh, the teachers and the administrators a great, a great start to the school year. I think that, uh, top over there, that might be, uh, where I went, uh, over to, uh, Oak Crest, and that's, uh, the new wing. I wanted to see the new wing, so I went by the new wing to see, uh, I, it looked like it came out really nice. I went to the pre-K, uh, room and that was, uh, uh, the teacher and the parent, the parent. She thought I was Coach Walton from Legacy. Very nice wing over there, Oak Crest. I stopped by, uh, Salado to wish them a great start to the new year, congratulations on an A rating, thank you, congratulations on enough on the A rating. I went over to, uh, what is that Highlands, uh, Bar, and I'm always feeling with a big grin, my favorite, trust me. And, uh, there's some beautiful t-shirts and, uh, I just wanted to wish them also a great start, uh, letting Mr. Kao there at the end base around and, uh, he told me that and so we kind of bonded each other that, that day. I ended up over to, uh, uh, Hall and I went unexpected, so I, uh, I asked secretary, uh, was the principal available? She said she's in a, uh, planning room and I said, well, you just tell her I stopped by. She said, no, I want you to go in the meeting. So she carried me in the meeting and I, and I met the, her planning team and chair of DUCI, her coach, and I, and those are teachers, so I missed their program, but I wanted to wish them a great start also. Okay, uh, uh, I was, okay, I also went by, uh, up at the top there, that's, uh, contact, stopped by the farm valley, first day of school, just to wish them also a great start to the new year. One of the, uh, administrators, uh, she said I was wondering if you'd come. I said, well, we had kind of thought about it, so they expected me to come and I came and I wanted to wish them a great start. Over at Sinclair, uh, we, I was just familiar with getting some signs put up, uh, not to, uh, uh, disrupt the drop-off of, uh, but it was for safety reasons. So I talked to Mr. Cassano, Mr. McKay, the chief, put some signs up to use the designated areas to drop off and, and it's working. Uh, that's Mr. Martin there and, uh, and I think, oh, the BFE. And, and, uh, they're doing a great job. That's, that's what leadership is like. When you can see the principal and the vice president still out there, roll their feet up, get in the trenches, you're going to get your staff in there, which they're doing a great job of, of, of forcing the drop-off, uh, designated drop-off there. And, uh, okay, we move on, I had to go down. And I want to thank you for, for putting safety first. Okay, that's the wing over there at, uh, Oak Crest, New Wing. This is Sinclair First Day School. I went through there, uh, that's, uh, Officer Liz, I just, we helped draw quite a bit by putting the signs. She has traffic going in both directions. She has to make sure that that flow keeps going and also get the cars out of the parking. And so when you get the cars out of the parking lot, hey, she has, uh, a pretty, pretty, uh, different ways to look at it and she doesn't have time to get the kids across the street. You know, kids, they still do it, but no problem, she still does that. That's not the poor of the traffic. But I think, uh, she's doing a great job for safety reasons and she's doing an excellent job on the first day of school. It was kind of hectic, but, uh, thanks for working out pretty good. Uh, okay, I went over to Heritage. Okay, I stopped by there for a few minutes just to wish them a great start. Uh, up in, up in the, uh, right hand corner, I was impressed that I was there during the transition period and all the kids are walking on the right side of the hall. Did you notice that? How many of that is, uh, uh, impressive to see the kids? We had to do that when I was in the, uh, junior high school, wasn't a middle school. But it, it, it can, uh, avoid conflicts by teaching them to walk on the right side of the halls and they, you know, I mean, that, that, that is really impressive to see them do that. If I see something that's impressive, I, you know, I come back and share it and I think you're doing a good job of teaching the kids to walk on the right side of the hall. I stopped by and visited with the coaches over Heritage and I just wanted to check in on them. Last spring, they had an athlete that was in a serious car accident and I wanted to check on her. Last spring, they said the doctors said that, uh, she wouldn't be able to play sports anymore. Talked to the coaches, she's back on the court. I mean, that's a blessing. I mean, she's back on the court, she's not had to work, serve, but they're working well. And that's out of there. Okay, I think that's, that's true. Is that it? Oh, no. Okay. I went out to the volleyball tournament on Saturday. I went out to the volleyball tournament on Saturday. Uh, Ariel is here texting, and she told me, hey, Coach, come on out, and he got a great house to tell me. So I got in motion. So I went out there, and I, the volleyball team, I'm really impressed with that for me. I hope for me with the rules, but I've learned. They, that's the Pacific Ball game also there. And they won all, that's the head coach, I apologize for not knowing the name. But they won only one tournament. They won only one tournament. Last night, at the meet to Hollis, she walked up behind me, and she said, hey, Coach, I appreciate you coming out to see her. I say, I will be going to the game. That is the championship game at the Holliday all over the weekend. Uh, and I was really impressed with the young ladies and all the support they had. Also, I don't know if anything of, of the cross tournament, the cross country team also won gold down the course. I think they had back in the morning.
Well, you see here, we, uh, at our church, we had a back-to-school prayer for, uh, all the, uh, school-age children and also teachers. And they, uh, actually let me go up there too, and I was, uh, thankful. They, uh, Pastor had a, a time of prayer for each of the students. And the kids just really enjoyed coming up and being honored in that fashion, uh, in that fashion. Went out to, uh, to Legacy, uh, when they were doing the landscaping and, uh, football players there. Uh, they also had the, I want to say the girls volleyball, basketball, I can't remember exactly. There was some young ladies there, uh, and, uh, I, I had an opportunity to show them some of their young men how to use a shovel. So, uh, I haven't ever touched a shovel. Uh, but they were using brute force, which that's pretty awesome when you're that age. You're that age, you start learning to leverage. Uh, I got to show them, uh, how to use a shovel, uh, but they did some great work. And then, I don't know if I have, that obviously that's before, and then the after. I don't think I sent the after, but the after picture of what it turned out to be was just remarkable. I also got a tour from, uh, Mr. Hyman there that, uh, he said he got me his last name. Hyam, right? Hyam. Uh, and he gave me the tour inside too, and he's doing a fabulous job. And, and it made a lot of sense with how he explained his vision, so I appreciate that. Also got a couple parents at meet the Hornets that had some high regards to that already. So good stuff, uh, here in, uh, Austin. This was welcome back, um, with, uh, all the, uh, teachers. Uh, I had the ribbon, uh, you know, with the prayer. And, uh, man of faith, uh, like I always share, I invite you to pray, uh, I believe in prayer. And ask God to give us a little attention on the campus and the teacher, uh, every family that works. It's always, uh, one of my highlights, I enjoy it. I love to see the energy and the excitement of the teachers and, and staff. Uh, and they come, uh, ready to serve kids. And it means a lot. That's, uh, so it's dear to me. Uh, next one's good. Uh, this year, the community and schools, uh, they had their ribbon cutting, their grand opening, uh, their house there. Uh, like they're all, uh, eighty-seven. And, uh, got invited out there, had some great things going on. Good place for them to go and, uh, have some reading, uh, space. Very interesting and, and pretty awesome stuff that's happening. Award from them, and, uh, it's neat to see what they, what they do and the part that they have for, for the kids. Uh, this was welcome to the Hive. I, I had a different cap on, and I had, literally, but, uh, I was, uh, helping my wife with the booster club, and she broke the door. And, uh, I was a nervous wreck, because she wasn't there to start off with. She gave instructions, but I was trying to follow the instructions. So, uh, just Billy, uh, Akbar showed up to help, and she went over, and it was awesome. I could just do what I was told, and so, but they did a, uh, they, they had a good turnout and great volunteers. Did very well that night as well. Uh, tour of Victory Elementary. Uh, got the chance after we went to the grand opening, uh, of the, uh, community and schools. Uh, we went back along with, uh, Mr. McDonald, and, uh, we had a tour of the facility. And just a remarkable, and I, one thing, uh, I do at, at work, I'm always looking at, uh, we call it, uh, BBS, safety. And we're looking for things that could be safety hazard stuff. And that facility was packed with, for, for the construction, the site construction. And the superintendent there, uh, of how, how awesome it was, just neat to see. All this work that's going on, and the facility was just clear all the green. And so when it's, when it's clean and clear, it's more efficient and great stuff. Au revoir. Uh, uh, you go back on, I, on there on the right, the State of the Education Legislature Briefing. Uh, got an opportunity to hear from two of our legislators there in the state capital. Uh, one is John Luke Hahnke, he's a, uh, state rep, one of our state representatives. The other one there is Senator, uh, Menendez, and, uh, Zingus. And we got to hear from, uh, two sides, right? And the neat thing about their partnership, what I loved is, they had was, one's, one's a Republican, one's a Democrat. But when it came to school, they talked about how it didn't matter, right? They think it worked together. I loved the fact that we're, we work together. So got a cha- chance to, to listen and to hear, uh, and also to have some living. One of my, one of my things of hope is to be more active and advocate for what is at that. Uh, campus, welcome back, uh, welcome back. Uh, I went to, uh, Island Forest, and, uh, they, uh, they invited me into their picture. And I said, I'll mess up your picture. They invited me anyway, uh, so I got a chance to get up there with them on their celebration in, in campus. And, uh, again, the excitement that was there was very, uh, special. And, uh, super proud, uh, of what they do. Uh, my two grandsons are still there, and I see a person, I see the enthusiasm, I see them. It's just extraordinary. On the top right, you know, that's, uh, Ballard Law there, she's, uh, on my, uh, left side. The young lady on the right side grew up in, on Ucoup, and, uh, she's a kindergarten teacher there in Holland Forest. So I, uh, just sad, it was going on. I got a chance to go to Heritage, uh, opened up in prayer there as well. Had a couple of, uh, words to say, uh, encouragement. And, uh, stop by Legacy, I was, I was late. My apologies again, I got there, I was, I was like fifteen minutes late. I was trying to make all the rounds, and I thought I, uh, had the, uh, the calendar set, and I overbooked myself. I didn't want to get a ticket, I didn't know if it was cheaper to go or something. And then, uh, also Salado, uh, they know how to celebrate, I'll tell you. And, uh, they, they had, uh, this red carpet down the middle there, and, uh, they, they did their, each, uh, each grade level did their dance. And I was just like, wow. And then, of course, they had to put some extra music on there, I go, do I came in? And I was sure, having a good time. I think that's, uh, that's all we did on that one. And, uh, watermelon supper, uh, that is awesome. I love watermelon. Uh, the coaches, I thought, so it was me and, uh, one of the football coaches that, uh, should have wrote his name down. I, I see his face right now. With the other two coaches, I have a coach Moose, uh, they beat us. I was like, you know, board member, they're gonna take it easy on me, they're not even letting me win? No, they, they put it down. I, we almost got scuffed too, but it went for my teammate. Uh, watermelon contest, they, that's always fun to see. You always have somebody, watermelon coming out of their nose, and, I mean, it was gruesome, but, uh, they had a lot. Uh, and the lu-ha, uh, the lu-ha there they had. Got a chance to go over there and show support. Let me speed up, because I got people. Coaches, welcome back. You see there, uh, the, uh, they honored the, uh, the softball team on their act. The great accomplishment, and the coaches were excited. Fan booster fundraiser, we, uh, we had, uh, chicken and sausage. Had to wait a little bit, but it was worth the wait, so I appreciate that. And you will, uh, meet the Hornets, we just went there last, last night. It was last night. I think that's, that's it, uh, and then I guess happy birthday. I didn't put that, maybe I do that. Maybe it's today, one of the things. Thanks.
Always such a joy.
I'm sorry.
You know, it's not just like the first day of school, but of course, it's, uh, one of the things that I totally enjoyed was watching the mama bears, the mama bear. I mean, they were like, they'd been rehearsing all, all summer probably, right? They, I mean, it was just so neat to see them, and watching the kids walk through school. Uh, put hands, and I noticed that they got there, they were just so precious. And so I, I totally enjoyed that, I started to walk earlier, so, uh, in the morning, husband and I, so we get to see them, and it's really, really good. We did, uh, a prayer, had a congregation to the best of these students. And we did it for the students, the staff, everybody that would come into the presence of these kids. So that they would have a, uh, proper symbol, and hopefully just stay in my ear. One thing that I did, uh, do that I was, uh, asking about, I, I attended that one. And I thought it was really cool, after seeing Sinclair's, and talking about the culture. And it was called Shaping Acceptable School Culture. And I don't know if I superintendent knows this person, but the person that did it is Dr. Mario Acosta. And he had some kind of, uh, world-class name kind of thing, and he, he's out of Austin, uh, in, in Austin, uh, the school that, uh, not a lot of claims and stuff. It's called Lester High School, uh, from Acosta, okay? And then they, and he's written a book, and it's called The School Your Students Deserve. And so, uh, just a couple of points I'm gonna take from that and share with you, because it was really, really good. I mean, it was very excellent, and prepared, and it just kept you, you know, on your seats, wanting to do, implement some of these things. Uh, one of, four of the things that he shared was identify key components of effective school culture. Align the, uh, the professional practices with the cultural expectation. Uh, support staff well-being and student engagement through positive climate. And to understand how to measure and sustain cultural growth. And one of the, the, the things that, uh, that I really took away was what does, what does this look like? What does a stable, positive school climate look like? And so these are the, the fellows. Uh, it looks like leadership, support, and trust. It looks like communication and feedback, recognition and professional development, work environment and educational wellness, collaboration and relationships, and role clarity and autonomy. Not how, that sounds like our school. So it was really, really great to see that, and, and see how people are really supporting schools, uh, public schools and going to education.
Kind of relevant, I just wanted to give a shout-out to Tradition, or, uh, a BRA, and a shout-out to Oh, Chris, for, uh, ABA. I'm gonna say, congratulations.
All right, so we have, uh, sixty-seven, seventy-five, obviously twenty-five years old, so you're...
Yeah, I'll turn it over. Uh, older? Just needs you to have a hard copy of the slide right there. Just call it, uh, the, the, the word, uh, first, for the title, it's bad, so we'll make it a little bit longer.
President, Mr. McDonald, Mr. Ward, thanks for the opportunity to briefly highlight some of the data. And I'm just so early in the year, but I get into this year's data, but I got a lot of things I want to walk through. Have a important question for us. I think you've seen this before, uh, I'm gonna make sure you read this. And so, uh, we got to make so many good links to me to talk about. Um, we did get our ratings in, and so, uh, the state did finally release the twenty-twenty-four ratings. Um, and on the same day, they released the twenty-twenty-five ratings. And so I captured those up there on the screen for you. And I showed the increase from the one year to the other year. And then, uh, I, I just, I don't know if you noticed, but I, I, they got locked, and so I couldn't tell myself. And so I did a little bit of digging, and so I actually knew data that I don't even have from schools I've heard before. And so I was looking, and so like in the, if I was just looking at growth, okay? So we're just talking about growth, uh, kid-by-kid growth, and how it's represented in the system here. And I compare our schools here to the region around the state, kind of region-wise. In Region Twenty, um, Sinclair, uh, was one hundred and twentieth highest in whole region out of eight hundred and fifty schools, um, seen growth. Tradition is in the top one hundred in schools in the region. Oh, Chris is the sixteen highest of all schools in the region. I was Salado. And not to be outdone, of the eight hundred and fifty-five schools in the region, the third highest in there out of this. So I went a little further with the data, and I go one more time. I looked at the ratings up there, so on the far right, how much of an increase did we see between the years? I said, can I say the nine thousand eighty-four schools in state Texas? Yes, I would go on the thousand eighty-four. And I love to see how we did in comparison to that. So Haddon Forest was, um, in the top two hundred in increase, so top two hundred in state. That's our top five percent of the increase. Uh, Salado was one hundred and twelfth, so the top three percent of the state in the United States. Was the thirty-eighth highest in the entire state out of nine thousand eighty-four. That's the top one percent, right? Top one percent of, uh, individual student growth for Kansas. And Sinclair was twenty-fourth highest in the state. Well, it's the top half percent of the state with your campus. Okay, um, but there's more news, and we haven't talked a lot about this in the past, so I'll take a moment to make sure you know about distinction designations. So these are TDA recognizes this outstanding performance. And what I really like about this is you can take your campus, and then they save the four most liked your campus. So they look at elementary to elementary, then they look at, um, make it look like campus, they look at social dynamics, um, percentage of students that are, that are bilinguals. They look at a bunch of different things, how local the population is. They try to get the most equitable, the closest comparison possible. And so they can make good distinctions in seven different areas. Reading, math, science, social studies, academic progress, which is that one where it's the, uh, schools' measure overall. Uh, college readiness, which goes down to elementary, because they're looking not just for passing a test, but like excelling at the college readiness level. And then closing the performance gap, which is that last section of accountability that looks at self-population. They look at, uh, bilingual, special education, Spanish, African-American. They look at, uh, to host the language, which is a test. And they see, like, uh, is the whole campus is thriving, or is it just like the overall, the overall scores? That makes sense, like making sure that everyone is thriving in the campus. And so of those seven areas, um, in the last about fifteen years, the districts have three times that we've had. So, um, actually, when Joe Barnes was at Legacy leading the DLR team as assistant principal, they got, like, charge support. Uh, now, John Wood is up there, and, you know, some of your senior students, John Wood, we use, that's Tradition's old name, right? So Tradition was John Wood, they got them proposing the app, spurs it out. And then just a few years ago, the most recent one, the recent high school got more tracking and growth. So the kids' progress from year to year. So that's just a simple... So that's just a set stage for, uh, some news stories. So our first bit of news is Tradition. So Tradition, um, is, uh, proceeding a distinction designation in the area of academic growth. So that's, uh, that's it that we were talking about, about making, uh, tremendous progress in the area of these schools that look like them. Um, of the 40 schools, they are the fourth highest in the group, fourth highest. And, uh, yes. I could just take a second just to say, um, it's hard to, to capture all the basic things happening in Tradition, but, but, um, their system work was just really exceptional there. If you look at like their behavior systems, um, a couple of years ago, you may recall the discipline data was pretty high. Um, their rating, their behavior system was low, but they really focused on that and dramatically raised that. And so, um, the work is really, really phenomenal, their data work, um, it's means of the team, the way that they're really getting into that data, helping target kids, they do by kid, by group. Hey, these three kids are working on this standard for the next two weeks because we're gonna nail this thing and, uh, really pay off, um, Tradition. So we've never had a campus get more than one year, um, before then. Because I also want to share what we would like to see. So Sinclair's, they had two distinction designations. So they're getting one for, um, let's see, uh, closing the performance gap, so making sure all kids are successful. And then also for their academic growth, as you heard before, they have, um, who growth. And so, um, a couple of stories, Mr. Harvey, if I can say, if I can share some things. Um, you know, Mr. Harvey was in his second year and I feel like his investment in leadership team has really, has really started paying off. And I feel like, um, you know, the team, uh, having great second semester, we saw their literacy data was really going well, if you recall last year. But that second semester of math data was involved, on fire, end up, you know, it's, it's a credit to that team and the work they did. And I'm happy they finished, um, you know, it shows that Mr. Harvey was an academic facilitator, uh, before he stole it away from his own district. And that's, that's a passion, Mr. Casey, that's something good for him to be successful. So, um, thanks, Mr. Harvey, good job. But wait, there's one. Oakcrest, Oakcrest, uh, brought three distinction designations. I hope you're seeing the trend here in that middle category, that blue one right there, academic growth. Um, the growth was huge in Central last year and Oakcrest was, um, really, um, bigger in that area. Uh, post-secondary readiness, uh, Oakcrest kids didn't just pass that state thrive at levels that the state's saying. Our campuses are, are lightening, uh, they're, it's not just passing, it's, it's above that. It all came being successful. Here, I'm checking my notes, um, I checked, of the 40 campuses, uh, Oakcrest was the second highest, uh, work point.
I know. Oh, don't bring that up right there.
And can I say that I brought a number of tools that helped us level up district-wide data systems. Um, can I say, um, you know, Mr. Ron, interwork of planning, the work that she does doing over there. And can I say that you're gonna see a trend here in the next few campuses, I'm talking about, is it more? Um, that there's a reason why we just hired, um, the assistant principal, see, to be victory, right? Um, because Miss Lozano did amazing work as assistant principal. Um, she led the, the highest rated behavior system. Um, she, um, leveraged that time to get into academics and make a difference, make sure the school was running well. We're, we're blessed to have her over at Army, um, and I'm just here letting hand that she's getting a victory right now. So, hey, way to go, Oakcrest. We had a campus, uh, with four distinctions, so Salado, I got the academic growth, uh, closing the gaps, post-secondary. They're the only ones in the district to get the science award. First time we've seen one of those science ones ever, et cetera. Um, now, um, what I want to say is Miss Triana, um, had really made some shifts, I believe, last year in the way she's did some things and the way she got into that math planning. Um, I just don't think that they were, like, all year long, we kept seeing that math data, if you remember, on Salado. And saying, oh my gosh, she needs a lot of, look at Salado, look at Salado, uh, she's a big part of that work. Similarly, uh, the way she's been pulling her assistant principal, um, running one of the highest behavior systems in the district, um, allows her, um, to not have to spend much on discipline and, and stay the road. So she's doing amazing work, um, can I say it that way, around planning and getting, um, D R growth. So that made progress, um, in no small part because of that work. Um, and so, um, we go, Salado only comes in, I hope, because if I recall correctly, Salado was the highest in the group. So. And we got one more campus for you. Um, so, um, I think ours, um, uh, almost swept it, right? So we got five of the six eligible, uh, distinction designations, road, closing gap, secondary, reading, math. Um, I don't think you'd ever find a math number four, uh, they're the only ones getting reading in the district this year. Um, and so, pretty remarkable. And, um, I want to say similar to what we just said about the last two schools, um, can we say from Sarah Harvey, that's an amazing, um, resource over at, um, Haddon Forest. And that, uh, she's phenomenal, phenomenal leader, uh, who, you know, previously that kind of facilitator, amazing, still doing amazing things. Uh, running one of the top rated behavior systems, again, has that behavior system really cooking and doing great things. And she's not having to spend as much time on discipline, um, she's an integral part of the academics, what's going on there. Can we say that Ms. Kelsey and this, um, George Duncan are doing amazing work preparing. Uh, they know, they know kind of prepare, they know every lesson, everything, every week, and they, they study those lessons so hard to make sure that every team is up there, is on top of reading their planning and that, uh, the lesson preparation work that they're doing is just phenomenal over there. And, uh, Haddon Forest, um, as a, as a huge book of teachers performing at, at, uh, these, and those. So, thanks. I'm gonna just wrap it up with a couple more slides. Can I just say that I think you've seen these slides before, we've got a list of our goals that guide us. Um, you know, when we looked at some of those, uh, the goals were ambitious and, uh, um, you know, I think that helps push us. And so having, having good, good goals and, um, stretching our thinking, um, and, uh, the basic work that, uh, in these years have, uh, helped our campuses accomplish, um, our part as we've gotten really clear about where we're going. And, uh, having high expectations, learning purposes, if kids achieve, um, and that takes me to, um, kind of maybe share a couple of quick stories for you. Just looking at strategy on page, if I can highlight a couple things from that. Um, we talked about high impact teaching and learning, as one of the main things we're doing. Um, in that area, one of our focus areas was on routines and procedures. And so, um, if I can say, uh, I was over at McCon Valley earlier this week and I went in a couple of fourth grade reading classes and I've just never seen engagement at that level, um, in that context. It's the most good engagement I've seen at McCon Valley. It was remarkable seeing all the kids, um, so early in school year with absolute clarity. It's a testament to that team and practice that they've been getting ready for it. Um, similarly, I've heard people bragging about Tradition. Um, at first day of school, they're like, why are all the kids going out? It's, it's not the end of the day, what's going on? They had, uh, gotten such a level of clarity that they had practiced dismissal and they were making sure that everybody knew exactly what to do. Uh, making sure that it was a super tight system and, uh, making sure things were running super smoothly. Um, over at high schools, um, trying to make sure that all kids are meeting that 11th grade goal, uh, college readiness. One of the things you're seeing, seeing a lot of high schools do is, um, gear up dual credit. So if we get kids ready to take dual credit classes, taking them by their, um, so in that 11th grade year, uh, that's one of the ways they demonstrate college readiness. So as that's gearing up, um, this is a, kind of the year of pushing on it and it'll be a big push over the next two years to help hit those ambitious 11th grade levels. Um, data-driven construction, uh, we've got over with every team, talking to them about how the targeting students, getting super clear on it. Um, heard a funny story over, when they got over to Honor, they were one of our later visits. Honor, the teachers were like, hey, we heard about this, like, what's taking y'all so long? We, we wanna get on this data right now, we gotta go, we don't have time to play, we want, or we wanna get on this. And so I appreciate that, um, you know, our teachers, um, it's the, the way that we're knowing where we are, what our next steps are is at a different level in Central right now. I've never seen anything like it this early in the year. Um, we've got that data dashboard and, um, we're getting to the beginning of your screening. And so as, um, as we finish up screening, then, um, we'll know, uh, exactly every kid, um, uh, who, who needs to be targeted um, from the beginning of the school year. So we'll make sure we keep having those amazing results, um, as they get super clear, we keep pushing. And I could go on and on, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna, uh, lose up all the time. So thank you so much.
I think that is a singular day, exciting.
Did that sound around by this?
All right, next item is 7.2% higher than the other.
Yeah, trustees, this, this month's report is available for you. If you're studying over, the, uh, connection to that.
And then next item is 7.3% on construction.
Yeah, I'll turn it over to John House.
Then the, uh, we're gonna do it two more times.
All right.
So as well, um, y'all, we have permission to start working on the 22, uh, 22.5 on early. And because of that, we are right on time and timed and scheduled to open our, uh, we can, we all, we can, and then we can. And so what you'll see here is the location of elementary 110. Uh, in the end, it's still referred to, yellow boxes here. It's going to be on the doorstep of our district and your tenders ultimately to be overcrowded at that time when we get there in a couple of years, acquisition and, uh. This is the rendering of the front of the campus. You can see it's very packed and really pretty. Um, it looks similar to some of our other campuses, but we want every school to have its own identity. So the facade changes a little bit, uh, but the, the structure itself varies according to some of our other. You can see here, because things work at our other elementary, the parent drop off, the bus routes, this campus also will have these spacious spaces behind the campus that will allow the car to spawn at the campus and the vehicles, the bus, back. This is the front of the campus, audience all the way across. Um, we anticipate this campus will have a lot of walk. There's subdivisions on three segments, two segments.
It is somewhat embedded in the subdivision currently. There's another one, it's just a bigger one.
So growth is happening, y'all learned it out there, you see it, so place, shady space outside, parents just walk out. It's in the last sign, it's on code, and in front of the campus, it helps people to know where to go, to save things up and be something that we're thinking about here and making it welcoming, welcoming at all times of the day for the parents and the students that we walk. So this is the back of the campus, very similar to the bar at the campus, it goes to the two-story building there. And then the cafeteria and the gym. You'll see there's plenty of spaces in the, the campus and the administration where we utilize for learning outside and also very attractive students during their recess, P E time. On the other side that you can't see are the pre-pay, uh, playgrounds and the outdoor learning, the trucking from the outdoor. And the classroom is there also, uh, the trees are spread, we put there, but we are going to have really nice landscapes that we hope will, will be able to grow and make a very attractive suite set. Um, this, of course, that's the only one that's, that's, uh. Color palette, you'll probably, when you visit some of our other elementary, you'll notice we're using a similar color palette. Uh, and that's with intention, we're trying to set some standards for all of our elementary. So the one we have is the main campus, it's very easy to have similar colors in the materials. And so it's, uh, very admirable for us also. The color that we're gonna be highlighting at cup 10, though, will be the green, the green shade here. The materials that are picked are to go, uh, also with the colors theme. They're similar together to the tar and the victory. Um, but every time we build a campus, we get a little bit better at recognizing what materials work better and are cost-effective. So in some of the other rooms, you'll see that some of the materials we selected are more durable. We've learned, um, how to protect our walls, whenever you think that elementary, the changing of the walls are not important. But they get stepped up and when they quit, and you can turn around in the campus and it could look aged faster. So some of the materials we're selecting are just as comfortable and will, uh, allow the more durability. You'll see that with some of the other time also. This is the red restroom pool, security definitely is a major, just major, main point here. Everything is very secure, it's very attractive, uh, highlighting the green shade. Everything that's supposed to be, supposed to be ballistic is, um, safety, security, everything is access control. This will be completed as well. Library, natural light, uh, one of the surveys that we did on the student's availability level, both of them make even they want that natural light. So in the library, we're really trying to do as open as possible so the opportunity for the natural light of that upstairs to come all the way down. Upstairs, we see those are working spaces for the staff and the administration. Uh, they have meetings, they have parent meetings, a large kind of meeting space. Downstairs, statue spaces can be towards different sections, so they need small groups. They can do professional development, which the teachers do in this library, by doing the surveys. And having the displays on both sides of the walls, so that's how we utilize this library. Cafeteria, uh, again, I'll say, every time we build a campus, we get into the, um, this one will allow visibility from most of the cafeteria to the stage. So when they have parent meetings, presentations at night, wherever you sit, hopefully we have a good view of the stage. And you'll see there's scenery, the, uh, painting there, probably, uh, uh, I didn't.
It's a different.
The graphic they do, and the pretty hair. So one of the colors that were integrated into this campus is abundant out there in that area. So if you're interested in the pictures, we're gonna integrate it into the campus. This is one of the hallways, each hallway will be identified by the color. So it's gonna be easy for the administration and the campuses and the parents to know if they go to the blue hall or if they'll go to the orange hall, because it'll be identified by color. There's plenty of space, all of those are marked for, for sports, where the teams can put attractions, more student displays. The hallways, you know, that's one of the materials I was telling you about. It's gonna save the wall structure, that you will, not mark, that's gonna be easier to play, it'll be easier to maintain, you won't have to paint it. Uh, you'll notice all the seating, there's interesting tiles, they're every color, it looks like wood. It's not as expensive as wood, but in the hallways, when the kids are walking down the aisles, sometimes it can be a little bit noisy. So those are intended to comfort the noise. That's typical hallway in that, in this.
Uh, this last week, we actually did a very big model, you know, of the power, but we're going to cut, um, the power. So that's a new name for any construction program. Now we're being able to, like, actually isolate the first roof of the school, air condition it and then start the roof and finish out once it's over and stuff like that. So really good progress. At Luther Mallard team, as you said, it's a very beautiful campus, it's a really, uh, well, uh, site, it's all great. The roads are going in, it's well, has these curves and, uh, seems a more, do that center section now. They've got everything in that courtyard gray, they're now making it, uh, so. Good progress there on the site as well, uh, has the ability to sell, the wastewater treatment plant has been brought in. Get that all pumped in, ready to go as well. Uh, unfortunately, we never had access to Sarah, Sue or Sarah were down streets. So, so we did have to put our own wastewater treatment plant. Inside those rooms there, you can see a lot of the walls are closed up. We're pushing across that campus, not as much sled wall available anymore, it's a lot of drywall, we're finishing that out. Good progress, that team's really pushing hard. As you said, it is one of the cleaner sites, uh, which we really appreciate what it does. They drive safety, but it also just, it's easy to place and follow each other through that, that process, right? Good progress there with a really good group, the site, all is great, uh, starting to get curbs in now. Uh, have the final, uh, power poles coming across. Always, it's always a challenge to get utilities to the site and the power poles are coming in now. So we anticipate, we hear the next couple of months, they're going to power there. Good progress. And lastly, C T E is still on target to, is that December turnover? Uh, a lot of drywall going in right now, that should be pretty much, uh. closing that down. Building exterior, it's all in gray now, more progress going on there, H-tracks is fully replaced, again with power, but really good progress there. Got the sidewalk done towards past week, before the students got back, so we've got that progress out of the way and available to them to do that, that campus, so we're running away as well. Good progress at CTE, staying on the contract. As Mr. Ball said, elementary school ten is really wrapping up plan right now, we'll start policing dirt, turn there, as well as the high school plan is really wrapping up as well, we're starting to get them back, digging through that, cleaning that, that project out, and dirt turning on both those projects here for next August.
Well, I'm not, I'm not going to ask about the bus, since you mentioned it. I think it's a state step.
Yes, one of our groups, which was Texas, is now back finishing up plating. Once we get past plating, then we'll go back.
Thank you so much.
You had mentioned that color palettes for, appeared to be getting, how about for the middle school, do they have their own?
They have a similar color palette, it's a little bit cute, it's a little bit darker, but we'll use some of the same colors, of course, their mascot is red, so we're going to try to integrate the red more down to the athletic area, the gym area, and then the main, this is the front office, and the hallway, we'll use a similar color palette. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, let's take a look at your August, September calendars, just a brief moment. Here in August, just wanted to point out a couple of things, and that is just the highlighted open house events, it'll be, it'll be the twenty-fifth, so we'll start to see campus open houses begin that week, carry over into September, so just trying to flag those in your calendar. In September, lots of things for this team to consider. On the fourth of September, you have a board workshop, that'll be with System of Great Schools Board Pathways. Again, just as a reminder, as part of our partnership with System of Great Schools, the board's retired, we go to Lawrence, most of our governance training, but in lieu of that, we offer a new version, that is, as opposed to front loaded, at the beginning of the year, and then, and so there's a training, a work session with Civic Solutions, which is our technical support provider for the training, once a quarter, and this will be the first. So it is an all-day training, it is on Thursday at four, so again, just wanted to flag that in the calendar.
You don't need a second job, you just need to learn.
You also have the first, as well, will be, I guess I could use the word optional, they are board work sessions, they're agenda workshop sessions, and we're going to start conducting the meeting prior to our regularly scheduled meeting, and that is to give each board member the opportunity, if you so chose, to come to a formal meeting where we don't necessarily need a form, because we won't be taking action. But it is a formal meeting, we'll post that meeting, the agenda, and what our team will do is just go through the major items that we intend to bring forward at the regular meeting, give the board a chance to understand them, dialogue around them, and to get clarity around those topics that we've agenda items in the subsequent regular meeting the next week.
The meeting before the meeting?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So that first one will be on the ninth, those will start at five o'clock, right here in the boardroom. On the eighteenth is your next regularly scheduled morning meeting. There are a few holidays that have been in September, the first of which being the first is Labor Day, that is a student and staff holiday. And then the nineteenth and twenty-sixth are also student holidays, but they're staff development days. And just again, as a reminder, we for several years, in response to feedback from staff, really use the calendar to leverage time for staff to do the important work that they need to do to prepare for the high quality teaching and learning environment that we put so much out. And so on the nineteenth, that's, that's a day-to-day, and that's the day where we have enough data to begin to unpack with staff, with support, to begin to understand where we need to make adjustments and start moving kids, so that we can target their needs. And again, we're doing this medium week in September, medium week when we have data, and we bake that into the calendar, so it's timely for our staff and our campus teams. And then following that, on the twenty-sixth, is quarter two planning. So that's an opportunity for our teams at the campus level to support teacher teams to plan for the second quarter of instruction in advance of that quarter beginning. So they'll do things like really understanding the state standards, the depth, the rigor, clarity around that, they'll make sure that our assessments are aligned to those standards, so if we're going to teach to those standards, we want to assess learning in alignment with that, so they'll get those things worked out. And then they'll look at the instructional materials and make sure that they understand how those instructional materials can be utilized to support instruction at the level of the standard, and then assess those. So we do those things, we block those times out in our school calendar, so that teachers can do that together, with support, in the regular work week, right, as opposed to on their own nights and weeks. And we've done that, up to the last several years, and each year, we just get better and better at that, and those, those are sacred times for our teachers and for our campus leaders. So I wanted to point those out for you and give you a little more information about those days. And then lastly, the week of September, eleventh and fourteenth is this year's Tascantaz, as you mentioned, it is in Houston, several of you are scheduled to attend, so just wanted to bring you to that. And then lastly, I can have Mr. McKay queue up Board Hub. So in an effort to better communicate together as a team and to create a one-stop shop, if you will, for all things that trustees need, and also an effort to archive all of our communications, so it's always accessible to all of us. We've created a Board Hub, it is the first run at trying to do this, this communication, this interdependent communication. And so it is something that we could iterate along the way, because we use it, we look for your feedback and direction, and we can customize this thing and adapt it to the best of our genes, but we're ready to launch. And so I want to give you a quick tour, hopefully staff have been able to give a shortcut on your device, on your mobile device, so that you can just go straight to your chat app, if you will, get it directly here, and on your laptop or iPad as well. Want to get it on every device that you utilize while you're in the district or wherever you are in the world, quite honestly. On the landing page, you'll see at the top, there's quick links, those quick links can take you to the district website, Tascantaz website, by clicking on those, we can customize those quick links and add more along the way as you guys give us the direction of what those things are, the best feature needs. Then there are three tabs, Board Request Form, Board Request Spreadsheet, and Resource of Reference Doc. Want to click on the Resource of Reference Doc first, that's just a page, two-page document that lets you know everything that is on that site and what it could do for you. So it's just a reference for you. Also, the second page, there are directions in the event that you need to add, shortcuts on any new device, right, it's either an Android device or an iPhone, and then at the bottom, you can see the QR code that you probably utilized today when you set up. So going back to Board Request Form, that's a place where if you ever need information, you can submit a request, and obviously follow the direction on that form, click on your name, click on the department from which you want some information, what kind of information are you looking for, and then a description of that information, then indicate to me whether you want, whether you feel that's a little needed or not, and that'll signal to me whether I need to stop doing what I'm doing and get that information process, or whether we've got a little time to get that done throughout the week, right? Immediately when you submit, Mr. McKay and I are flagged, and we're just on the, now, when you submit that request, Board Request Spreadsheet, it's going to archive it. We did a sample with Mr. Caroso yesterday, you hit submit, it's populated on the spreadsheet and accessible to every trustee. In the last column, when you submit that response, that response will be published right there, and accessible to every trustee, and these will be archived forever, so every trustee will have access to all the information, together for individual trustees, so that everybody can be calibrated on the same information.
Yeah, personal information or personal question, everybody to you.
Well, this is just, it's just board level information, right, and so you want information about a personnel matter, you want information about, or you got a question in the community and you wanted some more information to respond, that sort of thing. Now, if it's personal, that's a phone call, a text, but it's different. You still have those, the same methods of communication that they utilize and are still in play, this is just another layer of communication. Further, further provides access to as much information that is necessary for you as individuals, and all of you individuals are on your own leadership journey, and on your own service journey, and so you, as I understand it, really want to be able to get the information you need as much or as little as you can, that's up to you, right? And so we just wanted to add one more layer of resource that we can communicate, we can do that. Further down on the page, you've got some quick links, so this is where you can get to your board meeting agendas without having to log in, right? The way that you typically did, you can just go to the hub, click on Board Meeting Agendas, and then from that interface, you log right into your diligent board, right, and now you've got your board meeting agendas. Board Operating Procedures, these are your procedures that you guys review and adopt, amend and adopt each year, so this is the most recent set of board operating procedures that you guys can produce. There's the Board Policy Manual, so if you ever need to search a policy, get clarification on a policy, it's just a quick link, so you can do that. The next one is, is an effort to try and give you more seamless access to create your board updates for each month's meeting. So by clicking there, you can see a folder for every month of the year, so say for example, the September meeting is the next meeting we're going to have, you can click on that, find your folder, so in this case, let's just say Mr. Volkey. Mr. Volkey can be at a game, he uses his phone, he takes a picture or video, immediately he can drop that into his folder, and now all of you have folders that are being populated throughout the month, or Mr. McKay, he can, he can start those into a slide deck, and he's not making seven individual messages, seven individual timeframes, and unintentionally posting your average.
We're saying it, Mr. McKay from himself, in part.
I'll bet this will make the job a little easier, because I rushed the video, so.
With practice, find, I mean, think, you'll find this will be just a much more seamless with already given stuff. And you can create a collage, across his wife, and do it for him, and stick that right in there. The next one is your calendar of events, which you always get a hard copy each month, you put it on your refrigerator, you still get a hard copy, you can still put it on your refrigerator, but here it is linked electronically, so if you don't have that calendar with you, you want to check on your mobile device, you can do that. At the request of Mr. Quaid, which I thought was something for you guys to possibly use as a tool, y'all are always going to somebody events, and sometimes y'all, y'all, y'all want to coordinate coverage, when there's multiple events around the district in one night. So this is just a tool, use it however works for you guys, but let's just say Mr. Caroso is going to go to the varsity football game on May, on the five o'clock and six o'clock on Tuesday the twenty-sixth, right, if you looked at his calendar for the month, that's when the events he's going to go to, you can put it there immediately, it's possible, right, you can type that in there in that column. Then when the rest of you are doing the same thing, you might decide, hey, I'm going to do it, they'll go right in there, and then you know, join each other. Or you can say, well, there's a couple of events that maybe he's going to that, and maybe I'll go to this, right? So it's just a tool for you to coordinate coverage, either you like or not, right, you don't, you're not obligated, but it's just a tool. And then the instructional calendar, that's our calendar, so a lot of times, y'all in the community, and someone might ask, is Monday a holiday? You know, you can get to the calendar really quickly without having to click one of the ones. There's our TDA Start Testing Calendar, just for your reference, if you know what those dates are throughout the year. And then lastly, this is just a template for you to go to, to copy paste in the event that you get a response, you know, relates to board policy, the board ultimately is the last line of hearing complaints, and the effort is for complaints to be heard at the lowest level, and so you guys always have to explain if you're listening, if you are concerned, you want to encourage them to go back to the campus, talk to the teacher, talk to the administrator, who's a chance to work that thing out, but this is a way to just simply say, on behalf of the board, right, we're going to pass that on to the superintendent to make sure that he gets your, hears your concerns, and takes care of those, and follows up with the board to make sure that it's handled appropriately. So in the event, as it happens sometimes, we get a group email, or someone sends emails to all of us, the president can copy paste a response, just so they know that it's heard, it's been received, it's being, that should be taken, and we'll follow up with the superintendent to make sure that it's handled appropriately. So it's just a tool for you guys, to keep you guys, you know, aligned with your board operating procedures and board policy. And then, the last thing on there is Board Weekly Communication, so we'll start these next week. You'll see a section from the superintendent, but these are quick hits, right, you're not going to have every bit of information about what happened previous week, but definitely the highest level things that you may want to decide into, and then that, again, who's not just the superintendent, but every member of the administrative council will provide quick hit updates, and then in the upcoming events section, it's just taking the large calendar and just snapping out this week. So if you wanted to just double check, you know, what, what the calendar looks like, what events for the week, you can go right here and cross-reference to make sure you're not missing anything, or if you find yourself having time that you think you had, you can double check to make sure where if you're headed to something, you want to make sure you're at the right location, you can check it really quickly. And then a few other sections, not in our house reports, we've worked really hard in recent years to give our community, our students, our staff, a place where they could anonymously or not, report any concerns that they have, whether that's bullying, whether that's threats, whether that's, you know, you know, concerns as an employee or a parent in general, those things are immediately flagged to the right person in the district, and we execute solutions, and we document those solutions. We want to give you guys line of sight on a weekly basis into those things that we've been responding to. Next is seriousness behavior, we know that we have an annual results measure as a system and then across every campus in the district, to really do a great job with those behavior systems, as Jonathan said earlier, there's a strong correlation between those campuses and really strong school-wide behavior systems and their academic achievement, right? So we're really trying to do a great job of preventing seriousness behavior, and of course responding to those things in effective ways, and rather than waiting till the monthly board meeting to give you guys an update where there could be a lot of information and tough to really disaggregate and see patterns, you're going to, you're going to line of sight on a weekly basis of any major behavior that we dealt with the week prior, ultimately what happened. And then lastly, student attendance is obviously a priority of ours, continues to be. All of these things at the administrative council level, we monitor weekly, but we want you guys to also have access to monitor those things. And so these weekly updates will be archived, if you can fast-forward into the next two years, you'd be able to go to folders for twenty-six, twenty-seven, and prior to that, twenty-five, twenty-six, and look at every week's communication for previous years and this year, previous weeks. And so if you ever need to provide back to information, for clarification, to make sure you have, you're communicating accurate information, or if you have accurate information, it's there for you. And again, this is a one-stop shop, it's an attempt for the board as a team to have access in a very efficient way to get essential information, but also to get information as you need it expedited and in real time, and then we're calibrated about that information so we can all be on the same page, have the best information so we can serve our constituents across the district and community. and have the best information so we can serve our constituents across the district and community.
Mr. Carrasco, I know that many of these topics listed here are things that have been brought up by the conservatives or that's how things we'd like more visibility to. This is great. This is really, really good. Who put this together, if I may ask?
So our technology director, Mr. McKay. We met with a few districts who have been doing something similar and got some, instead of reinventing the wheel, we got some direction on some things that were working. Particularly for districts that had nine board members. There's a few others that have five. Which really makes it even that much more essential that there's streamlined communication.
Sure.
And then we kind of built it up in a way that we felt really met the needs based on the feedback we've got from this team. So this is the starting point. And again, we created it so we can iterate it and customize it along the way and keep refining it and making it better.
It's outstanding, great job. Yeah, this is great.
It's good. I'd like to add to that, too. I appreciate all the hard work that went into this. You know, when leadership had me, you wrote over to a lot of districts. And I said, well, some of them had this, but I think we're above the law at this at the starting point. So this proud woman is much appreciated. You know, we asked for some information and we got exactly, I think, more than I could have imagined. So thank you so much for this.
Anybody have anything else? Questions? So the next section is eight, and it's an action agenda. Eight point one, agreement for the purpose of the attendance credit, option three agreement and to delegate contractual authority to the superintendent.
Yeah, trustees, this is something that you have to approve every year. And basically, making something complicated very simple. What this refers to is the structure of school funding that essentially equalizes funding based on property wealth, right? And so you all heard a lot of that. You know, that as you become property wealthy, there comes a point which local share exceeds your predetermined need. And in those cases, that additional wealth is taken back by the state and redistributed to communities who aren't as property wealthy to equalize funding. So essentially, you're given the authority to acknowledge the vacancy that we as a team, we understand that law. And we're essentially given the commissioner authority that if we were property wealthy and exceeded our funding level, that we're acknowledged and fundamentally by law giving, we gave permission to take those additional funds and then redistribute based on the data that they have. This is an exercise we have to go through because it's required. We are not property wealthy and we're not in a position where our funding level is gonna surpass our predetermined need. So nothing's going to happen as a result of this, but we have to acknowledge that we understand this law and that we're authorizing the EAA essentially to the commissioner to take the appropriate action should we find ourselves in that situation. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Anything to add to that, Ms. Burns?
No, you said it.
Okay. Madam President, I recommend board approval to accept the agreement to purchase attendance credit and to delegate contractual authority to the superintendent as presented.
We have a motion from the superintendent. We have a recommendation from the superintendent. Do I have a motion? Have a motion, Mr. Carrasco, do I have a second?
Sir.
A second, Mr. Santos, all those in favor? I, all of opposed, motion here. I have eight point two, a donation to Tyson Foods.
So trustees, we're really excited about this. Our child nutrition team went to their annual conference. And at that conference, they were drawn for a $5,000 award from Tyson.
That's true.
Yeah, yes, Tyson Foods. Tyson Foods. Well, because that donation is a $5,000 award for board policy, CEC local. The board has to accept that donation. And you can see in the item there, the child nutrition team certainly is going to find a way to utilize those funds in a way that generates some most ROI. But currently, considerations are for some equipment, some special celebration items at campus level, and then engagement, culinary consulting, and to continue to refine recipes that are liked by the kids, but also nutritional guidelines. And so those are some initial thoughts. Of course, there's still arguing for the DAA post, or our alliance leveraging those $5,000. But our job tonight is as a team to accept that donation if you guys do this. So be happy to answer your questions. All right, trustees, I recommend board accepting the donation received from Tyson Foods in the amount of $5,000.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent. Do I have a motion? Have a motion, Mr. Gerhardt, and a second, Mr. Santos, all those in favor? I, all of opposed, motion here. Next item is eight point three, donation from the Howard Foundation.
Trustees, we're really excited about this program, number one. And number two, this partnership with the Howard Foundation. So as you know, we started innovating, of course, in the high school program. We're studying in our aviation program, which is gonna allow our kids to learn drone pilots and to earn an issued level of certification to work as a drone pilot subsequently. Through the partnership with the Howard Foundation, they graciously committed $25,000 to support that program. And those funds are gonna be used to purchase drones for instructional use. Any remaining funds will be utilized in the continuation of the aviation program during the '26, '27 school year. If you have a representative with us tonight at the Howard, we just wanted to stand our gratitude for your partnership and for your investment in our program. We want to be a benefit. This is just the beginning. There are some partners, well, you know. It's our first year of this program. And I think to also acknowledge that we're being a holding director. We're seeing this for a reality.
Do they have a question?
I do with regard to after this, with regard to both donations, I wish.
Trustees, I recommend board accept the donation of $25,000 from the Howard Foundation to the aviation program at the Central High School.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent. Do I have a motion? Have a motion for Mr. Carrasco, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, Mr. Santos, all those in favor? I, all of opposed, motion here. Next item on the agenda is eight point four, the student code of conduct. Mr. Santos?
Yeah, trustees, we have a couple of items in your list ladies' packet. We're gonna kind of go through those with you. House Bill Six was passed in the last session. And it had implications for our student code, student code conduct. Typically, we utilize task needs represented in the student handbook. And so typically, we bring these to you each year with very few changes. But after a legislative cycle, typically there are more changes. In this particular case, because there was a House bill that really focused on Chapter 37, which deals with student, administration of student discipline. There are a lot, there's a lot of impact. And so we're providing a couple of tools for you. One is an executive summary of House Bill Six. You can take that huge bill and it just gives the high points, the little points explaining what changed. We also have an overview of this, this is TDA's effort to do the same thing. It's also something that we need to send out to parents as statutory required. So the TDA document is going out to the community. Mr. McKay will point some things out, get under those documents. And then lastly, you have a hard copy of the entire student code of conduct with several things flagged in there, which are the things that have changed, that resulted in the late days legislation. And we're gonna just touch each of those for you, just so you're comfortable with what's in there and what's changed. So Mr. McKay, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, sir. If, like he discussed, he shared with you the executive summary. This just does a great job of really highlighting the major changes due to House Bill Six and how really impact what you'll see in translating it into the student code of conduct that's up there. So that's just a reference for you. And then, you know, particularly thinking about what is now required, the mandate that TDA send this out. We have to send it out for, I think it's going to be out tomorrow evening at five o'clock to all of our families. Just a few things of note in there is they just want families to know about what the expected behavior looks like. As well as, one of the newest is around removals by teachers. So to remove a student from the class and what's now required as a part of that. And then if you turn it over to the backside of it, there's just more explanation about what happens as a result of that removal. And there'll be a campus placement review committee that would have to review that unless the teacher provides written consent to return it back to the classroom. And there are special concessions, the placement committee can still make the decision in override that this student is in the class. Or if it's a sealed special education teacher and has the home place where that can be served, then obviously, based on the child's IET, this child may have to go back in the class because of the old law statute that's there. And then down at the bottom, you can see, just really wanted to unpack what this disciplinary removal process looks like. There were some substantial changes to that as well, which if you go back to the executive summary, it'll talk about that. So these are just here for tools for you to, you know, be informed if you need to stop by a parent and be there. If you want to turn to your student code of conduct, I'm just gonna get just a few highlights. Notable changes to the student code of conduct. So if you want to hit the red tab and pull the red tab back open, you're going to get to the page that is around our cell phone guidelines. So it looks like you'll see at the top, it says expectations. In the middle, it should say something on our property guidelines for certain purposes. So it's on the red tab. One of the things that we wanted to point out is, first and foremost, we had to remove the language of the $15 fund. We no longer allow the $15 as we were for, as long as I can remember, I'm an administrator now, for 19 years. So all 19 years is the first year we have it. And then the other addition, if you move down to the second bullet, the third bullet from the bottom, that now includes headphones, earbuds, speakers, smartwatches, any device that can connect to internet that can communicate with each other is also not allowed in schools. So the campus has done a great job setting up procedures to make sure those have been thrown away. And in follow-up, like we talked about the guidelines. The guidelines are also inside of our, in our student code conduct. If you want to turn to page, the second tab, which is the blue tab. And it is a first-time offense for possession of 15-degree devices or e-cigarettes. In past, it was mandated that if a child was caught, regardless if it was their first time or not, they had to go to an alternative school, regardless of the conditions. This now provides the campus the discretion to whether they send them to the alternative school for first offense or not. Obviously, it's mandated if they are delivering or selling those on school. It's mandated that they go to alternative. But if, again, if it's a child, it's the first time that they're caught, they have a minimum of 10 days of in-school suspension that are required in a review committee to make a decision. I know all of our campuses that are filled with that. They set up a sort of a discipline type of approaches and try to use it as an opportunity to teach. So we try to do the T-Check, Texas Child Help, and get them counseling because we're trying to figure out where the dependency is and help with their families to know what we can do to help each child to stay away from chemicals or substances. If you turn to the yellow tab, which is the third, and open up, and it's actually on the back side of the page, and it's around, it says positive behavior support and in-school suspension. Right there are the biggest things, that there is no more limit to the number of days that students can be in ISS. So before, it was a minimum of three days consecutive. Now, schools can place an in-school suspension for as long as they need. But there's a few statutes. Number one is that they have to have a review committee every 10 days. So after that, if the child's making out of progress and they so choose, they can remove this from the ISS and send them back into class. So you'll see that inside. Of course, everything is highlighted in the yellow. There are some of the major changes. I'm just trying to get some of the main, the main points for you.
Are those consecutive 10 days?
Yes, sir. They can be now. Depending on the circumstances, we've been in some unique situations where we have two kids that are being placed in each of them together. We've done some stuff where it's been alternating weeks that they may do. It's not considered the best scenario, but they are consecutive, yes, sir.
Okay, so I guess the question says so. It's not a few, like if they had one episode, they had three days here, then another episode, a week later, three days.
No. It can, it can be up to, I mean, just every 10 days. It has to be consecutive days. So if it's consecutive days, then they have to review it. So you just, so they, you can't go without. But the other caveat is that because special education students are federally protected by law, they have an IEP, they still have to be serviced in special education. So the campuses work through how do they continue to provide special education services for students who may qualify for those while they're in ISS. So they still have to find ways to make sure that that happens. No maximum, no. So they can be as long as they need to, depending on the circumstances. So they'll, like I said, the only requirement is that after 10 days, they have to review it. They have to document what that review process looks like. If you go to, but we're still wrapping our head around all of these changes. So there's a lot of new progress as well. We're trying to get a lot of support through task being here in our legal council. So as more comes out, we'll be continuing to work with the administration. You turn to the dark green tab, so the blue one. This one really revolves around major offenses off-campus. We have much more leverage now to discipline students if they involve in serious offenses outside of the school that may pose as a safety threat to the schools. You notice then at the bottom, the bigger, biggest one that is highlighted in the yellow for you towards the bottom of that page, is any false report or bomb threat to include terrorist threat involving other schools, regardless if they're on or off-campus at this point. It now becomes discretionary expulsion and mandatory alternative school placement. In the past, it was not that. It was a discretionary DAP placement, depending on the circumstances. So that's also new. So we still have the discretion, not even to possibly expel a student to the JJADP if that's the option that we have. Getting towards the end, you turn to the pink tab. This just gives us, allows us the opportunity to provide a virtual expulsion program. This is, we've run into this circumstances a couple of times where the JJ alternative program is full or they kind of have space or during these rare windows that are not acceptable. We can stand up a virtual program where we can get kids all the resources and the tools and devices they need. And then we can provide virtual expulsion, provide virtual education while they're out until space opens up in the JJADP. We can also do this as well for DADP. So if our DADP acts, we have them overcrowded, we could come up with some circumstances now. TDA is discouraging it because they also refer back too often that during COVID, you know that virtual learning was the worst type of learning. And if that's for a student who is struggling with behaviors, we need to do everything we can to ensure that face-to-face instruction. So what they also have placed in here is that you have to have a review committee after 45 days with the intent that you do everything you can to get the child back into face-to-face learning where possible. And then last but not least, if you turn to the orange tab on the very back, it's the very last page, kind of got cut off, I apologize about that. But it says emergency expulsions. At any time, if we have an incident or on or off-campus where we feel it is a serious safety threat or risk for the campus, we have the authority now to send a child through an expulsion process and A to B immediately. And then we're just happy to, within 10 days, set up a conference during that time. So they're very rare and very unique circumstances that these things may happen. But we also have that, we have more authority to be able to do that. In the past, we would not be able to do that. I'd be happy to answer. Again, this is just a high level. You can see any and all the other changes that are in there. And a lot of those are just minor tweaks, nothing really major. But I just wanted to get those, because it's some of the ones that you'll also see in the executive summary. Be happy to answer.
Yes, let's get a clarification on the rule on the classified teacher. Teacher has the right to have this good review without administration. Can you clarify that?
Yes, sir. So we give you now a singular disruptive event or a child who's been disruptive for many consecutive times. And if the teacher says, I no longer want change in my class anymore, it's not allowed. And they go through that formal process with the principal. Now, we have to set up a placement review committee. We have a certain number of pages that we have to have a placement review in order to make the decision for change or no change. We've always had that ability?
That's not new.
Yeah.
The process that is required to be followed down is.
Yeah. That's what seems, that's always been there.
Would you care to teach you? Bottom one is that, or that? You don't want to discuss the mechanism?
Right, you gave that.
Which are we doing? Yes, sir. It's something they had the right to do before, but now there's a process in place. Could it prove that or could it determine it's not? Could it prove that, or could it determine it's not appropriate depending on the kids' needs and circumstances? Right?
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
I get it.
All right, Madam President, I recommend board approval of the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six student code of conduct. As presented.
So I have a recommendation from the superintendent. Do I have a motion?
Okay.
I have a motion from Mr. Santos. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Glasgow. All those in favor? Aye, all of opposed. Motion carries. Do you have something you want to say?
It was, it was just in relation to probably going on to nine. Those, those donations, we come by the way, is it something that part of for a number of years before I came on? I'm really intrigued by that. I'm in sales, though, you know, it's, there's a highlight in there for, for promoting what we're doing, and there's tons of it out there. Appreciate the partnership from Dean Howard, and I know that there's others out there, so I'm just curious how, do we have to send a group to those? Do we sign up?
Yeah, so the Tyson donation was just chance. That was, we just happened to be right, we love to draw at a conference, an annual conference. The Dean Howard donations, we have been in partnership with Dean Howard for a number of years now, and, you know, the drone program is something that obviously has huge demand, rising demand in many sectors. And Dean Howard Foundation Aviation is their thing, it's in their wheelhouse. We have many district partners, and we're certainly one of the partners that we think we have a really great relationship, and so is investing in on making with us as well.
Do you have a question? Do you determine?
Can I say?
I'm sorry, can I say? I'm just generating.
Madam President, would we pull, I'd like to hear a little bit about nine point seven war goal.
Sure. So trustees, in your miscellaneous packet, you have a hard copy of our board long-range goals in North Carolina. Have you seen this before? In fact, there are those, we spent a lot of time, had a discourse around this, and we got some feedback from the board that night. So bringing this back, the adjustments based on the feedback. And so looking at the first page, you'll see the arrow, the star. We had a lot of discussion around how we started with a much less aspirational goal there, and ended with, you know, by 2030, we expect eighty percent of our schools to be AEP campuses, and by 2028, zero DAF campuses. And the discussion around that was, on the second page, when you look at the table at the top, it was, okay, so we want to get to eighty by 2030, what are the goals going to be here over the year? You know, having incremental rise to eighty percent is the same goal each year, or do we think we can jump a little bit more initially? And that was the discussion and where the board landed. They said, hey, you know what, instead of, say, forty-two percent, or forty-seven percent, or fifty-one percent, twenty-twenty-seven, man, let's, let's kick that up to fifty-six percent. Let's get a little bit more, we think we're on a roll, and let's be a little bit more, stretch a little bit more immediately, and then it's less aggressive in 2029, when we have fewer, fewer schools, if not not at AEP, so it's a little more challenging, the better you get to grow more, right? So that was the conversation the board had that night. So that top, on the second page, that top table basically illustrated that. So we go from forty-four percent, or to forty-four percent, to fifty-six, sixty-six, seventy-four, eventually eighty. So that's where we're at right now, of course, each year, and goal setting, we revisit our current reality, and we may, may adjust those each year. And then the second table is the other area where we have a lot of dialogue around those long-range goals. Our initial attack was, hey, man, all means all, we want to be at a hundred percent by 2030. Of course, that's not passing test, that's a much higher standard. The state's goal for students across Texas is actually sixty, right? Mike, you want to clarify that, Johnson?
Something.
Yeah, the state's goal is, is around sixty percent by 2030. Our goal was a hundred, and while we still expect a hundred percent of our kids to get there, and we're not going to rest until that's a reality, to signal to our teachers and our principals in our buildings, right? We had some, some nice discussion around, hey, you know, we'd like you, you know, to run a four-minute mile. After all, humans can run a four-minute mile, and you're, you're currently in an eleven-minute mile. It's not going to take long for you, for me, it's not going to take long before you get discouraged, right? So we wanted to make sure that we aspire to four, but he's at eleven right now, what's a little bit more of a real goal? And so where that conversation landed was, you know, let's, let's kick 2030 from a hundred down to eighty, it's still well beyond what the state expects, and let's rewrap, and let's see if we can set some goals from where we currently are for each of these milestones to something that's still very aspirational, but maybe more attainable, right? So again, now when we look at third grade and literacy and numeracy, so if we look at literacy, we're going from thirty-five percent to forty-four percent. If you remember prior, it was thirty-five percent until like fifty-seven percent. So it was much more aspirational, probably even towards unattainable. This is still very aspirational, maybe towards a little bit more business. So this is the feedback we got from the board. These are the adjustments, and so we brought it back for you guys to, if you guys had decided that night to take a look and clean up the page, you'll recalculate the goals year over year, and then bring those back, which is like the conversation we had. So I'd be happy to answer. Any more questions about that?
So I, I know I have a question. I do appreciate the workshop that we had, and the dialogue, and the excitement from the staff, and I think they're, we're doing great things, and I like the fact that we challenged the teacher before we go to the three floor, and I came to my class, so I like that. It's a good, it's a good, it's a great thing to have. So, that's all I wanted to pull, because I wanted to get to that.
Trustees, I recommend board approval of our goals, twenty-five, twenty-six, as presented.
Mr. President, a recommendation from the board, goal, that's presented. Do you have a motion? Mr. Glasgow, do I have a second? A second? A second from Mr. Gerhardt? Do I have a second? A second from Mr. Gerhardt? Do I have a second? Next item is adjournment, right? Do I have a motion for adjournment? Do I have a motion for adjournment from Mr. Gerhardt? Do I have a second?
Second.
Next item is adjournment, right? Do I have a motion for adjournment? Do I have a motion for adjournment from Mr. Gerhardt? Do I have a second?
Second.
Next item is adjournment, right? Do I have a motion for adjournment? Do I have a motion for adjournment from Mr. Gerhardt? Do I have a second?
Second.
Next item is adjournment, right? Do I have a motion for adjournment? Do I have a motion for adjournment? Next item is adjournment, right? Do I have a motion for adjournment? Do I have a motion for adjournment? Next item is adjournment, right? Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion from Mr. Glasgow? Do I have a second? A second? A second from Mr. Gerhardt? Do I have a second? A second from Mr. Gerhardt? Do I have a second? Next item is adjournment, right? Do I have a motion for adjournment? Do I have a motion for adjournment from Mr. Gerhardt? Do I have a second?
Second.
Next item is adjournment, right? Do I have a motion for adjournment? Do I have a motion for adjournment from Mr. Gerhardt? Do I have a second?
Second.
Next item is adjournment, right? Do I have a motion for adjournment? Do I have a motion for adjournment from Mr. Gerhardt? Do I have a second?
Second.
Next item is adjournment, right? Do I have a motion for adjournment? Do I have a motion for adjournment? Next item is adjournment, right? Do I have a motion for adjournment? Do I have a motion for adjournment? Next item is adjournment, right? Do I have a motion?